Call to all the City of Forest Park City Council Meeting Number 1330, February 18, 2019. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Burns. Collins?
Here.
Herbie?
Here.
Holt? Johnson?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Ness?
Here.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move to excuse Councilmembers Burns and Holt and also the City Law Director, John Wykoff.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we excuse Councilmembers Burns and Holt as well as Law Director John Wykoff. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to excuse, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those councilmembers and law director, excuse. Item number two is minutes. You would have received copies of the minutes in your package or any additions or corrections to the minutes. Hearing none, we'll move to item number three, presentations, Business of the Month Award for Speedway, Mr. Paul Brim.
Mayor, Members of Council, thank you very much. I think we all appreciate this project. At Speedway, the management team is proud of their success at meeting the needs of over 2 million customers each and every day. A recognized leader in the fueling and convenience store industry, Speedway recently opened its newest location on Smiley Road here in Forest Park. Under the canopy are 10 fueling stations, all featuring TV screens and enhanced customer security and convenience features. Inside the store, customers are greeted by an extensive food and beverage selection, including delicious sandwiches, beverages, pizza, and breakfast sandwiches. I'm there quite a bit for coffee in the morning. So, of course, our local store features the popular Speedy Rewards program. If you're already a Speedway customer, you know about this program. It's the company's way of saying thank you to the loyal customers, and it costs absolutely nothing to join. You earn points for gift cards or free merchandise. And Speedy Rewards also includes unique opportunities for members to earn coupons for free beverages or additional bonus points when you make a specific number of purchases. Speedway always tries to hire and develop people who embody the company's core dedication, the top-notch customer service, creating a dynamic and diverse workforce with a commitment to excellence. They already employ 13 people here in Forest Park at our location over on Smiley. While all this is reason enough for tonight's award, we all know why the Economic Development Commission wanted to recognize this company. Speedway took an aging and somewhat tired property, and I'll leave it at that, and converted it into a real, a truly successful, attractive addition to our business community. As we all know, they removed an old car wash building that was no longer in use, the existing structure, and they dramatically improved the appearance of the canopy and main building at the store. This project substantially improved a key gateway in the Forest Park, and for these reasons, it's our pleasure to recognize Speedway on Smiley Road as our February 2019 Business of the Month. And accepting the award tonight, and we've got a crowd, we've got the District Manager, John Wyland, General Manager Derek Daly, and the Lead Assistant Manager Valerie Mann. And I'd like to invite all three of them up to accept the award.
Congratulations. It reads, "The City of Forest Park Business of the Month, Speedway, Smiley Avenue, in recognition of the company's contribution to the growth and development of the City of Forest Park." Again, thank you. Want to present that to them?
Thank you very much.
Get in there, Valerie. I'm just the district manager. I'm kind of...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Who speaks? All of them?
No, we're not going to speak.
Oh, yeah. That's part of the move.
Yeah, we're just glad to be able to be here and redevelop that property. I saw it beforehand. I grew up in this local area and just recently relocated back here and am fortunate enough to...
Yes, you are.
Yes, ma'am. I'm fortunate enough to live here again and be able to contribute to what's going in the local community. We really believe that, and we offer advancement opportunities to all the employees we've hired out there. There's not a single job in that store that pays minimum wage, and we just look forward to continuing our development in the area and supporting the local community. We've got to take care of each other, right?
Thank you very much.
We thank you for letting us come in.
Thank you so much. Make sure we have a Speedway card.
Absolutely. Speedy Rewards.
Or you win.
She doesn't know. She doesn't know. She brought some.
Okay, next we'll move to item number four, communications from the public. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings will tape recorder for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address council? Please come up and tell us who you are.
My name is Monique Masonhalter. I spoke... My name is Monique Masonhalter. I spoke at your December and January meetings about my opposition and many of my neighbors' oppositions to the installment of Fiber Underground across the street from our Green Hills neighborhood so Verizon can eventually install 5G small cell technology. At your January 22nd meeting, you passed an emergency ordinance to waive the 30-day waiting period for installation. After the meeting, I asked your law director why the rush, and he said that you all needed to hurry up and install another small cell tower up near the high school because when kids get out of school and turn on their phones, there's not enough service. He also told me to stop complaining to Forest Park and take it up with Columbus. I already have. Regardless, as Americans, we all have the right to complain to our elected officials. Since I spoke here in January, a congressional house committee started investigating the Federal Communications Commission for collusion with the telecom industry regarding the federal 5G legislation passed in September. The telecom industry also admitted that they can't prove 5G is safe. Did you know that? Did you know that there is still no safe level of cellphone and wireless radiation exposure that has been scientifically determined for children and pregnant women? The American Academy of Pediatrics has issued warnings for many years about exposure to children. Research has been determined that because children are smaller and their skulls are thinner, the radiation can penetrate deeper. Research has also determined that all sources of wireless radiation disrupt the blood-brain barrier, which can cause it to leak. AAP supported the 2012 Cellphone Right to Know Act, which was submitted by then Ohio Congressman Dennis Kucinich. It didn't pass. Regardless, AAP and many others have continued issuing warnings. For example, last year CBSnews.com posted a guide online called "Eight Dumb Things to Boost Possible Cancer Risk." Number three was encouraging kids to use cellphones. Research has also determined that excessive screen use can cause a digital addiction, sometimes called screen or internet addiction, due to its effects on neurotransmitters. Some experts refer to digital addiction as digital heroin. Locally, the Lidner Center is already treating patients for this. Maybe others are as well. Of course, exposure isn't the only, isn't just about brains or cancer risk. Research has determined the blue light from screens can cause macular degeneration and blindness. I could cite this all night, but I only have five minutes. Anyway, you took an oath to protect the public, yet you passed a new ordinance to rush the installation of another small cell tower up here in order to enable children to use potentially harmful and addictive devices, according to your law director. Had you ever considered providing information to students and other residents about safe technology use and exposure instead? At your January meeting, Councilman Burns looked over at my neighbor and me and said something like, "We needed a movement." There is a movement already. Other states vetoed legislation that removed municipal control over small cell installation. Ours was passed. You continue to defend it and force it and make it worse. Your law director told me that Forest Park was one of the 90 Ohio communities that filed a lawsuit against the first bill that was passed in December of 2016. And to 2017, I found all kinds of references online about other Ohio communities who filed lawsuits, but none about Forest Park. How much did you publicize your lawsuit? Did you at all? Americans elsewhere, including elected officials, are keeping cell towers and antennas off school property and replacing Wi-Fi with wired internet in schools. They are stopping cell towers and antennas from being installed near homes as well as fire stations. I don't want wireless infrastructure installed near my neighborhood, and I oppose this additional tower being installed near these schools, even though none of my friends or family spend much time up here. If no one fought unjust laws, many of us still wouldn't have the rights that we have today. I provided ideas for you already on how to overturn this legislation. A lawsuit was filed in Santa Fe, New Mexico against the Telecom Act of 1996 because it doesn't allow opposition of cell tower installation based on biological and environmental risk. This violates our right to free speech. Since the FCC is now being investigated for collusion with the telecom industry regarding the federal 5G bill, maybe you could investigate whether there was collusion with the telecom industry regarding our state bill. Thank you.
Okay, let me make this comment. We have heard you, I think, three times now. We have, on the advice of our advisors, taken what action that we're going to take. We have, to my knowledge at this point, there's no additional or different action that we plan on taking. So, you know, while we have an open portion of our meetings that will allow citizens to speak, I can, you know, if you wish to keep coming back to speak, that's fine, but just understand that we've done what we think we need to do. This is a matter that should be dealt with at the federal or state level, and that's our position at this point.
And let me just add, just for folks that may not already know as well, so municipalities and our legislation obviously can't trump federal, and so our hands were obviously tied with that situation because in the event that we tried to do that, there would have been, there is and can be financial repercussions that we, as a city, would face from doing that. And you're in Green Hills, right? Okay, so you're in Green Hills, and so our residents would be footing that bill for also, you know, violating that federal mandate. So while I'm very empathetic, completely understand, you know, the movement and am very well concerned and knowledgeable about the impact that those towers are having, but that is why we've, you know, joined with other cities and municipalities to try to fight that. It's not a battle that can be fought municipality, straight to federal. That is extraordinarily expensive, as you would well know, and then our residents would be, you know, having the burden on that. And so we don't want any of them, of course, to even feel, you know, the health effects as well, but that's where we are, and we're happy that, you know, at least we're moving in that vein and moving forward and trying to alleviate the situation and be part of the cured for the situation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to speak also. I am Councilwoman Regina Collins, and in the vote that you made reference to last time, I was the lone person to vote no on that, and I did it because I personally am empathetic with the movement that is trying to stop the cell towers. That is, I personally am with you, and that's why I voted from my personal perspective. However, as a city body, we have no power up against what's already in place. So I just wanted you to know, I did hear you. You spoke a long time, and I heard every word of what you said, and I considered every word of what you said, and this council as a body, we all heard you, and our hands are tied.
One more comment.
I just have a question. Are you pursuing this with your federal legislators and senators from Ohio? With Representative Chabot and Senator Portman and Senator Brown? I'm sorry, what? Jessica Miranda is at the state level. Your best opportunity is to deal with the federal level because the state is following the federal guidelines, and we're following the state and the federal guidelines. So the place to get this done is from the top with the federal people.
Right. The legislation has already been challenged. The bill that I was talking about last time I was here had misintroduced my representatives in California to...
I understand that. Are you lobbying Senator Portman and Senator Brown and Representative Chabot? Because they are your representatives, they're the people to talk with.
Okay, is there anyone else? Is there any, excuse me, is there anyone else who wants to speak to council? We need to move forward. Could you give us your name, please?
Yes, my name is Dr. Patricia Bender. I grew up in the neighborhood. I actually lived at 829 X-More Drive. I had a practice right on Northland Boulevard, and I've been practicing since 1984. I am a registered nurse as well as a chiropractic physician, so I practiced traditional medicine and then went in with integrative medicine. I have watched your council meetings, and I am quite impressed with your council. I know and see that you have a bigger picture on opportunities in bringing businesses into the Forest Park region and have been very happy to see that you have working outside the box. I also know that with working with integrative healthcare, that there are many things that appear to the traditional medicine is outside that box. And unfortunately, when it comes to diabetes, or it comes to pancreatic cancer, or it comes to brain tumors, unless we're truly touched by illness, we really don't feel the repercussions of what Monique's passion is. I appreciate what she says because I've practiced for, since '84 with people with electromagnetic frequency toxicity, and it does seem so off the wall because it isn't tangible, it isn't real, and yet it is very real. So my suggestion that I would like to bring is to keep abreast, if these, indeed, these towers are going up, of what's going on in the healthcare of your schools. Now, Monique is right across the street from Sharon Road, so her neighborhood is very much going to be impacted by towers that are going to be put in on Sharon Road. And we have gone to council in Green Hills about it, very concerned as well. They have not accepted that they want them in Green Hills at this point. And I was curious, is there a payback, or are you being compensated financially from the cell towers for putting them in? So then, my question is, why did you decide you wanted them?
We can't keep them out.
So you can't say, "No, we don't want one in front of our high school"?
Say it, but that doesn't make it happen.
Yeah, I'll just offer two comments somewhat related to your question. One, we can't do it in good conscience because we believe we'll be on the tail end of a lawsuit that we cannot support. We cannot fight the big guys ourselves.
Correct.
So that's one of the aspects. And the other aspect is, I hope you appreciate the fact, we, as a municipality, would prefer to be able to regulate this matter, not merely from the safety standpoint, but from the aesthetic standpoint. We've been stripped of much of the authority that we would otherwise have as a local government in this matter. So there's several levels that you can look at, but the bottom line is, we, as a municipality, have basically been stripped of what we otherwise would have as an authority. And two, if we got into a lawsuit with these big companies, there's no way Little Forest Park can foot the bill.
Oh, correct. I understand that thoroughly. I'm 100% behind you. My concern is, when suits start arising because of the exposure, where is it going to fall? On who is it going to fall on? And, you know, on a federal level, it always seems to trinkle down, unfortunately, to those of us who strive so hard to make our communities good. But I think this is something we really should pay attention to because if indeed it does happen, we should be noticing a dramatic change in our children. And though we're all older, you know, and we're on the better side of life, they are just starting. And, you know, when we know that these proven scientifically to cause diabetes and cancers, then I think that we need to have a little more understanding and compassion. So I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your service.
Mr. Hodges?
And the last point is somewhat a summarization, just to assure you, we would prefer to be in a position where we could regulate and basically say, "No, you can't put something here, or you can't put something there, or it's got to be by these standards." That's what has been stripped of our authority.
Ma'am, excuse me. We've done all that. We did that way, way before you came here. We did that way, you know, when this first started. But it's like anything else, like Mr. Hodges said. When the authority is removed from the local municipality, there are very few options left to us. We can overlook that authority and try to do otherwise, in which case we know we're going to get sued. We chose not to do that because we can't afford that. Sir?
Yes, I wish to speak. My name is Todd Bricker. I live at 2 January Court in northeast corner of Green Hills. I spoke at the December meeting, and I'm coming here tonight too in support of Monique and Dr. Bender, in expressing my concerns about the, in my case, my concern about the new changes in the new system, the 5G buildout, and on top of the existing concerns for the existing systems and how they impact all living things, including women and children, men too. The, I want to reinforce my desire that people keep abreast and actually research 5G concerns because I feel there are, I have a technical background, I'm a retired mechanical engineer, and so I can understand these terminologies they use in these reports. And in the new 5G system, there are important differences that I just want to make sure that everybody realizes that instead of a few small cells or the big cell towers in, say, commercial areas, this new system is going to require many more of the small antennas in residential areas because they want to have, extend the reach of their wireless system into homes and buildings, and so they want to have it closer to the residential areas to penetrate the structures. And the other important difference is that they're ranging into higher frequency ranges that are also more penetrating to people in addition to buildings, and that's, I just want to reinforce the concerns, not only on the traditional communications that we have, but the additional impact that I feel that we really need to pay attention to with the new 5G system.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anything else from anybody else? Hearing none, thank you. We'll now move to item number six, reports of standing committees. First of all, being Public Improvement and Facilities, Councilwoman Moore. Councilwoman Moore, hold on before you do. Let me do my usual. At this point, we're going to get ready to go into the actual business section of our meeting. You're welcome to stay, but you don't, if you want to leave, please feel free to do that. This is the time that we tend to lose our audience.
Thank you.
And while that is taking place, Mr. Smith, good to see you back. Hope you're feeling better, doing better.
Thank you. Good to have you on the call.
All right. Okay. Item number five, A under five, Public Improvement and Facilities Committee, Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report at this time, but I would like to inform the residents that the park and rec department is in their final week of baseball and softball registration. We are seeking residents ages five to 11 that would like to play T-ball, coach pitch, baseball, and softball, and registrations end Monday, February 25. And also, we are in the planning phases of our Gospel Fest, and so we are inviting churches to send their auditions tapes to the recreation department by Friday, March 15. And we want you to save the date. The Gospel Fest will be April 27. That's a Saturday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and that completes my report. Oh, it is at Dayspring Church.
Any questions for Councilwoman Moore? Hearing none, thank you. Councilwoman Moore, I have one item on the agenda for you for the work session on the 25th, CRE Housing Council. Do you have anything to add?
No, I do not.
Next report, Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Ness.
I do not have a report at this time.
Any questions for Councilwoman Ness? Hearing none, Councilwoman Ness, I have no items on the agenda for you at this time. Do you have any to add?
I believe the letter submitted today to you all concerning...
Okay, you want to just read that?
Sure, sure. This letter is dated February 18, 2019, and it reads, "To my Forest Park colleagues and Mayor Johnson, it is with extreme excitement that I submit to you this letter as a means of recognizing one of Forest Park's dearest residents and leaders. Ms. Stephanie Dumos, as you well know, began her political career in our city and served us well as a mayor. In honoring the accomplishments of African-Americans during the month of February, please join me in acknowledging her historical achievement as the first black female in history to become a Hamilton County Commissioner by proclamation. Respectfully, Chelsea Ness."
Thank you. We will make sure we take care of that. Any questions for Councilwoman Ness? Hearing none, next committee is Ways and Means Committee, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I wanted to mention that among the many pleasurable things that come with this job is attending certain events, and one of them was yesterday, it was the police annual meeting, and it is always wonderful to hear the commendations and the things that our police department is doing, the number of guns that they're taking off the streets and so on. But I want to mention four commendations that I felt were fairly outstanding, and two of them involved attempts, I think, of suicide by cop, and our staff was, certain individuals were singled out who were involved in dealing with those particularly volatile situations, and I want to thank them. One of them was also a child abduction that was resolved successfully, and one of them was by the command staff in dealing with some publicity, potential publicity, and when they were interviewed, our people here, they did not include us as a community that was having difficulties in this particular area. So our police department is doing an outstanding job. I want to commend all of them and particularly the people involved in those four issues. Thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Hearing none, Councilwoman Herbie, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session. Do you have any to add?
No.
Next committee report, Community Development, Mr. Burns, who's absent. They got a report for Mr. Burns. There are no items on the agenda for Community Development for the next meeting. Next committee report is Law Committee, Councilwoman Collins.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report from the Law Committee at this time. However, I am available for questions.
Any questions for Councilwoman Collins? Hearing none. Councilwoman Collins, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
Yes, I would like to add to the next work session reconsideration of ordinance 29-2017, the $25 fee that went into effect February 2018 for reserving the shelters in Kemper Meadow Park, Central Park, and The Grove at Central Park.
I will note that on my list. Next committee report would be Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Holt, who is absent. Anybody got a report for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing none, there is an item, one item on the agenda for Councilwoman Holt where we will be discussing the tentative agreement of the city manager's contract. The next item on the agenda is item G, next committee, Internal Governmental Relations and Communications. That's my committee. I have no report. I have no items on the agenda. I will answer any questions if there are any. Hearing none, we'll move to item number six, Mayor's Report. I would just report to that, as usual, I attended the police department's annual meeting.[1790.86] Hearing none, we'll move to item number six, Mayor's Report. I would just report to that, as usual, I attended the Police Department's annual meeting. It was a success. Most of the police officers, except, what, I think, one or two. One was sick, and the other had a definite family were present. And just to give you some perspective, I think overall, they talked about when— one of the things that they give out is they give out little medals, actually, they call them dog tags, to the police officers who, during the course of an arrest, confiscate firearms. A hundred and sixteen total wa— was the number. And keep in mind that in some cases, that was two officers or more involved in that when the guns were confiscated. The other two things that—the other one thing that was outstanding to me was the Chief's Award, which went to Officer Wilson. You may have seen this on the news, where a young boy was walking along the lake with his mother, and he was—as kids want to do, he was paying more attention to his cellphone than he was to where it was going, and he fell in the lake. Officer Wilson, who was off duty, basically saved lives by getting them out of the water at that time. So, I guess to take home from that is two things. One, we need to make sure that our kids do pay attention to where they're going. It's hard to do, 'cause—and not only just kids, but, you know, that cellphone can get you in a lot more trouble than just texting and driving. If you aren't paying attention, it can be a problem. And the second one was also an off-duty occurrence, and this would've been just last week, I believe. The chief was driving north on 75 around Sharon Road, and he noted a car weaving in and out. He saw that the car was about to collide with a car in another lane. He finally followed and helped up, tried to help urge the people to get that car off the road to Noahville. The car ran off the road down—the embankment and into a pole, I believe, and they had to break the window to get the driver out. And upon doing that, they found that the driver was driving unconscious as a result of obviously drugs. So, our police officers not only do those kinds of things that they're supposed to be doing when they're on duty, but they are very, very good about assisting the larger community when they're off duty and doing the right thing. And at the—and there was— and it's not just the officers out there on duty, you know, there were wards for the police support staff, the clerks, who, you know, these people in the course of doing their normal jo— everyday jobs, they also had to deal with changeovers and systems, and yet, nobody missed a beat. So, again, congratulations to all of them, and they'll keep up the good work, I'm sure. That would end my report. I'll answer any questions if there are any. Hearing none, we'll move to item number seven, City Manager's Report, Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. I'll report first that the departmental reports have all been completed, have been included in the council packet, and also placed on file with Clerk of Council for public inspection. I would also report that we will plan to issue the next issue of the Progress Community Newsletter upon the announcement of the next City Manager. So, we're gonna time the release of the Progress to the day following Council taking any action on this matter. That would conclude my report, but I would respond to any questions if there are any.
Questions for Mr. Hodges? Hearing none, thank you, sir. We'll move to item number eight, other reports, that being Clerk of Council, Mrs. Duxton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance number 05-2019 and resolution numbers 03-2019 and 04-2019 were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Clerk of Council? Hearing none. We'll now move to next item, item number nine, New Businesses' Motion, Councilwoman Moore.
Yes, I motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read the first time by title-only ordinance numbers 06-2019 and 07-2019. These ordinances were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules requiring the read in full on two separate days and read for the first time by title-only ordinance numbers 06-2019 and 07-2019. Is there discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Nuss?
Yes.
The motion to suspend passes 5-0. Would the clerk please read ordinance number—the next item on the agenda is ordinance number 06-2019. Would the clerk please read that ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 06-2019, an ordinance to repeal ordinance number 01-2019 and to withdraw the submission of the question of, "Shall the City of Forest Park have the authority to aggregate the retail natural gas loads located in the City of Forest Park, Ohio, to the electors of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, and declaring an emergency?"
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I move adoption of ordinance number 06-2019.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt order 06-2019. Is there discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, this ordinance and the next ordinance, which deals with repeal on the aggregate of electricity, are being done, not because we're opposed to these, but because putting it on the May issue makes it a single-issue special election for which we would have to pay. And so, we need to do this in it as an emergency in order to meet the timeline to withdraw it from May, and then we will put it on in November. So, I would urge adoption of this and the next ordinance.
Any other discussion? Just to amplify, I think we found out from—the after the fact from the Board of Election that there are no other items and issues that are going to be on the May ballot. And because there are not any others, we would be a standalone issue, and we would have to pay some $27,000, $28,000. So, our—it was—it's been recommended to us by staff that we not do that, that it in itself would probably be a turnoff to a number of the citizens. So, we would withdraw those now, and the same would hold—the same is true for the next item below, and to put them on the ballot in November. So, would the clerk please call the roll on order 06-2019?
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Nuss?
Yes.
Ordinance number 06-2019 passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is item B, ordinance number 07-2019. Would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 07-2019, an ordinance to repeal ordinance number 02-2019 and to withdraw the submission of the question of, "Shall the City of Forest Park have the authority to aggregate the retail electric loads located in the City of Forest Park, Ohio, to the electors of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, and declaring an emergency?"
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I move adoption of ordinance number 07-2019.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 07-2019. Is there discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
No, this was explained with the last ordinance.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on 07-2019?
Herbie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Nuss?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Order 07-2019 passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is a motion, Councilwoman Moore.
Yes, I motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title-only resolution number 05-2019. This resolution was posted six days prior to the meeting.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title-only resolution number 05-2019. Is there discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Nuss?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is item C, resolution number 05-2019. Would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number 05-2019, a resolution requesting the Hamilton County Auditor to place special assessments against various properties by the City of Forest Park Community Development Department.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of resolution number 05-2019.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 05-2019. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, these are our annual special assessments that we place on properties where the city has to expend money for cleanup or code violations, and I would just urge adoption of this.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on resolution 05-2019?
Moore?
Yes.
Nuss?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 05-2019 passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda would be item D, resolution number 06-2019. Would the clerk please read this resolution in full?
Resolution number 06-2019, a resolution amending the designation of depositories by the City Council and authorizing the City Manager to enter into an agreement with those depositories agencies. Whereas Fifth Third Bank, J.P. Morgan Chase Bank, U.S. Bank, First National—First Financial Bank, PNC Bank, Nationwide Payment Solutions, and Huntington Bank have made application to and have designated by the Council of the City of Forest Park for designation as depositories for the active and/or interim deposits of public monies of the city. And whereas Star Ohio is an investment pool established by the Ohio State Treasurer and is a proper depository for investment of local government funds under Ohio Revised Code 135.45. And whereas the Council of the City of Forest Park has designated Star Ohio State Treasury Asset Reserve of Ohio as a depository for funds of the city in accordance to Section 38.01 of the Forest Park Codified Ordinances, now therefore being resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section 1, that Fifth Third Bank of Cincinnati, Ohio, be and hereby is designated to be the public depository for public deposits of the City of Forest Park until February 29th, 2020. The agreement—the agreement may be canceled at any time with a 60-day written notice. Section 2, that Nationwide Payment Solutions is hereby designated to be the merchant service provider for electronic transactions as a merchant service for the City of Forest Park. The agreement may be canceled at any time with a 60-day written notice. That Infotech is hereby designated to be the payment processor providing an interface with the online docketting and payment module of the Baldwin Group software used by the Mayor's Court and the e-pay module to the municipal income tax solutions software used by—to accept payment via the city's website. Section 3, that Fifth Third Bank, J.P. Morgan Chase Bank, U.S. Bank, First National—First Financial Bank, PNC Bank, Nationwide Payment Solutions, Star Ohio, and Huntington Bank be and hereby are designated to be public depositories for interim deposits of the City of Forest Park until February 29th, 2020. Section 3, that all public monies of the City of Forest Park heretofore collected and in treasury are to be collected during the period of designation hereby made shall be active or interim deposits of the City of Forest Park. Section 4, that the probable maximum amount of public money subject to deposit in each depository herein designated at any time during the period of designation is hereby estimated to be $2 million active deposits and $10 million interim deposits per depository. Section 5, that the City Manager is hereby authorized and directed to enter into an agreement with the above-named depositories and merchant service provider. Section 6, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect upon its passage.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I move adoption of resolution number 06-2019.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 06-2019. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, in short, this is a housekeeping item that is allowing us to have the ability for residents to pay income taxes online. It's maintaining Fifth Third as our city's primary depository, but is adding Infotech as a eligible credit card processor for online payments in the tax department. And I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on resolution 06-2019?
Nuss?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 06-2019 passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is a motion, Councilwoman Collins?
Yes, I hereby move to direct the Clerk of Council to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the City of Forest Park does not request a hearing regarding a liquor license request for Family Dollar Stores of Ohio Inc., DBA Family Dollar Stores Store Number 23699 at 693 Northland Boulevard, Forest Park, Ohio, 45240, for a C1 and C2 permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we will not challenge the request for Family Dollar to receive a C1 and C2 permit. Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is a basic liquor license request for a new li—a new liquor license for the Family Dollar Store located at 693 Northland Boulevard, Forest Park, Ohio, 45240, in the Forest Park Plaza. The request is for a new C1 license, which is for beer only in original sealed containers for carryout only, and C2, which is for wine and mixed beverages in sealed containers for carryout. The Police Department has reviewed this matter and has no particular concerns about the request as it relates specifically to the Police Department, and basically advises that they did not find any causes for placing an objection. Other than it specifically being the Family Dollar Store, there is nothing unusual with this store holding liquor licenses and selling alcoholic products. So, a motion would be in order to direct the Clerk of Council to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the City of Forest Park does not request a hearing regarding the subject matter.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes— motion passes 5-0. Did you have a—
I have a—I have a no.
Oh, oh, okay, sorry. I missed that. Motion passes 4-1. Next item on the agenda is a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move to receive the General Fund Summary Report as contained in the departmental reports.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to receive the General Fund Summary Report as contained in the departmental report. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0. Is there any other business to come before the body? Any other business to come before the body? Any other business to come before the body? Hearing none, we are adjourned.